Okay, with you, Sandra. Well, I've got. What your question is, yeah, I got to see it. But you look like. It's a wonderful thing to do. I get a fair. And I would go. Got more bail pretty much. Wow. Brother, I got probably like a good nine. I'm pretty like that. Bro, you're out. I'm like, you know, come on, man. I might have to get the standard. That's what I'm. No. And that's a long way. That's good. It worked really good. Worked around that vine. We got it built back there. I just get bored and get mad back. I don't know. They're taking my notes in there. He's like, he's got some pride. So he's got three hours. About three. That type of thing. He got that support. And I had to, we need to put it. The, the.
I see you're saying.
So you're watching there. There's no other. I really can't. I just want to take a look. I want to go out.
Okay.
There was a lot. They would. Now, well, they have that whole bunch there. All right, Terry?
Sorry.
And he got them. I didn't know. So by the way. Anybody will talk about it later.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, at ten o'clock, we'll go ahead and call meeting. Correct. And it was way. I know it, I know it.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today to do county's business. We ask that you guide us in the decisions that we made. Thank you for the weather that you've given us. We ask that we get some more rain in the future. We always appreciate the rain. I ask that you be with those that protect us locally, nationally, and around the world. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Oh, thank you all for being here today. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court and a formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three max. Okay, okay. Court to discuss and consider and appreciate project schedule and staffing.
I've got a block line that's really good, too.
Good.
Being tipsy.
I guess this isn't really a, the road and bridge, but it's part of what we do. It's hard. Notice that they're having, they're doing a large project over here replacing gas line there at Avenue the twenty-sixth three. And just let you know, we have talked to those guys because there is a lot of fiber right there that belongs to us. And they are aware and they are being very careful.
Okay, yeah, I saw that.
You see the yellow pipe? It gives you, you want to make sure that they know it's there.
Right.
Hopefully after March, January twenty-one, seventy-three, we'll be back. Hopefully.
You just hope so, right?
That's why we're trying to get covered in now. Anything else? Okay. We're still trying to put a cover in, but we've got water running down through that area. That's going to be hard to do. It's on eleven oh five. We're working on it. It looks like we're going to have to put it in wet. Not going to be easy.
Love. Yes, it works out. Okay, court to conduct a public hearing on proposed tax abatement agreements with Intersect Power for IP Limited Best LLC, IP Limited Best Two LLC. And we will start that at ten oh four eight M. So, uh, we have IP Lumina and IP Limited Two Solar Farms. They're wanting to add batteries out there to supplement that. I say supplement. They want to add batteries up there for it. Hundred and sixty megawatt each, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So hundred and nineteen million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollar value for each one. That doesn't take long, does it? It's clear the land, come in, set it down, hook it up, and it's there.
Yeah, wind's, wind's already cleared as well, except that the existing PV fence line. So it's really unloading them and helping them up.
Okay, so simple, easy, quick. Clearing.
Will there need to be a base applied there or is it already there for?
A, a foundation?
Yes.
Still build a foundation.
Okay. So maybe a concrete pad or something like that.
Exactly.
Or concrete pads or whatever. And how many containers?
I believe it's eighty-six per project.
Wow. That's, that's cool.
Good size.
So probably four, five acres.
Yeah, less than six in any case.
That's a question I didn't think to ask, but how many containers?
That's, that's a lot. You mean, you think there would be? Well, I think it's a great project. We have been doing it since two thousand and five, and we've always had a good rapport with the people that come in here. And we, we're looking forward to having even more going forward. I think that I know a lot of counties that haven't received anything because they were not willing to work with projects like this. And so that's, that's their loss and our gain. And so we appreciate you being here.
We've got a letter from the Chamber of Commerce. Linda Molina and Sandra Salinas are here to represent them. And the letter's expressing support for Intersect Powers Lumina One and Lumina Two Battery Energy Storage System Project. They request that we consider the strong economic benefits, the generation of deployment opportunities, as well as the positive impact of the project on our community as part of the best chapter three twelve tax abatement approval. They've listed some of the things that Intersect has done since they came into Skerry County. Co-hosted the State Cool Skerry County Volunteer Event with the Snyder Community Resource Center. Distributed fifty-three vans and thirty-three AC units to residents. It was in August twenty twenty-three. Snyder Chamber of Commerce White Buffalo's Day sponsorship, Buffalo Day sponsorship, not multiple Buffalos. Skerry County Four H Award Banquet sponsorship. Gateway Family Services Christmas Wish List Event sponsorship and donation. Skerry County Junior Livestock Show donor meal sponsorship. Snyder Independent School District Welding Class donation. So been here for a short time and you're already becoming good, uh, uh, community members and helping out where you can. We do appreciate that.
What's the expected life of those managers? I'm just curious.
Twenty years, Ken. Use this one, Ken.
That one, Chris, well. Any other?
Something else. This is simply an action statement. And it's actually a property owner if they allow them.
Yeah.
And that's what a lot of folks don't understand.
That too, right?
And it's, it's open deal.
Yes, it is.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
Any other discussion in the public hearing?
Thank you all. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at ten oh nine A M. I record to discuss and consider tax abatement agreements with Intersect Power for the following projects. Property owner Rockin Mack Ranch Land Company LLC. Application for abatement is IP Lumina Best. And, um, Northern Skerry County Reinvestment Zone One is where it is. Construction of approximately hundred and sixty megawatt energy storage facility at a hundred and nineteen million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the second one is on the J S Chriswell Land and Cattle Company. This one is IP Lumina Best Two LLC. And that's in reinvestment zone two, same megawatts and same cost of improvements.
Is that a motion? That's my motion. You read it.
It was a big pleasure.
Yes, it was. Yes. We had discussions. I bet they were very, very helpful.
All the favor. Did y'all want to say anything? I'm sorry, we went through that, so.
Thank you guys for, yeah, coming here and we look forward to partnering with you and.
Right, you said, appreciate it.
All right, uh, court to discuss and consider minimum timeline of flatland solar. So flatland is one of those that first started getting discussed when I came in in two thousand and nineteen and it's been pushed back in time, too. And I think Intersect is, I think it was owned by a different company before and now Intersect has it.
Next era.
Next era, I'm sorry. Golly. Yeah, so. Yeah, so it's next era. So they finished the, or are about to commission the wind project here.
Canyon Wind, yeah.
So would you like to speak to this, Rob, on the extension?
Yeah, so basically this Second Amendment reflects the twenty twenty-six and the year C O D versus the twenty twenty-five that we previously have in the First Amendment. So our proposed changes are really just small language changes that we have here.
Yeah.
And that, that's pretty much it. A lot of it has to do with the start of construction and commencement of construction. I know we had met before, talked about possible donations and things to piggyback off Canyon Wind. Sits right in the same reinvestment zone boundary, so it's a location under eighty megawatt project. No major risk.
Okay, yeah, and we, when he says donation, he's, they're talking about making a donation to Skerry County in one way or another as a good faith, I guess, and to another group in Skerry County, not Skerry County, but in Skerry County, is that right?
Yes.
I think, I feel like this project will finally go forward. You're looking at starting in the fall, right?
Uh, construction?
Yes, sir.
Uh, constructions in the start mid-year in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
Well, this is the first time that we've extended agreements.
Sure.
Guys, and, and we appreciate you being here as well. And thank you for the projects that you've already done and what you're going to do in the future. Some blessings for our community and our county and people, for our taxpayers. And so I make a motion that we extend the timeline for flatland solar. We're now on by next year.
Sure. All the favor.
I'm a little sorry.
Okay. Did you vote? Yeah, okay.
Any opposed? There's no opposed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for being here. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Working on all of this. I appreciate you ladies.
All right, court to discuss and consider interlocal participation agreement with CERA to obtain technology services. And Angela's not here to back me up on this. She had a class that she needed to attend. We're looking at keeping the same email services. However, uh, we have been looking at the, uh, website. And this is something that's been an issue for me personally for a little while in that it's not user friendly on either end, our end or the user end. So, um, we met with TAC and CERA. They're two, two separate companies, um, looking at doing some, uh, changes. So standard website package, we're looking at the ultimate website package. Uh, it is a bit more upfront and a bit more, uh, per year. Uh, right now we're paying fifty, fifty per year. The ultimate package is forty-two hundred dollars a year. First year's fifty-five hundred and any setup and, uh, any setup that goes along with that. One of the, and you can look at other websites that CERA does and they, uh, they look a whole lot better. They're more user friendly. One of the big things that we liked with the ultimate was a communicator module to promptly place county news and announcements on the website. So any of the public hearings, any of the, you know, departments that want to put something on there that can't, uh, one thing I specifically asked about is, like the departments that don't have a voice right now, our airport doesn't have a voice, uh, on our website, our golf course doesn't have, uh, a voice on the website. There are several that don't. Uh, most of our departments don't. Most of it's the requireds that we have to have. We'd like to incorporate those as well, bring those in. Uh, but they would be able to post on their page anything that they have going on and we could put it in a communicator if we wanted to as well.
So is it, is it easier to do than it is now?
Yes, uh, yeah. So I know that, um, some of the issues is that there's so many steps to be able to put anything on there that's changed with the ultimate package. It's less steps, it's easier to do.
Well, I have deals. All departments.
I do, too. Yeah. If y'all have announcements of road closures, put them on the website. Um, we'll be able to do things like, uh, there's a big issue we have with the parks. Every year when the pool opens up, they have a line starting at probably three o'clock in the morning to sign up for the dates they want to use the pool. Uh, it looks like we can embed a calendar on there where they go in and they sign up and, uh, pay their fees on that website instead of standing out there waiting in line. So we open it up at whatever time and. Brings us into the twenty-first century some months and things, so, uh.
Well, it's safer.
Yeah.
All departments can use it.
No, they're not going to use it if it's too difficult.
Right.
Time consumed, it's not, you're just wasting your night.
Paying you?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a motion. All right, all in favor? Yes, ma'am. Website package, open the website. Court to consider a resolution to nominate members to the appraisal district board of directors. We have a nomination of Shane Smith. Is there any other names that?
Uh, oh, uh, I'm sure. Mr. Smith. Coming to picture the, the lot is going to, the delegates agreed to be on the appraisal review.
Okay, yeah.
I make a motion that we approve Shane Smith.
Sir, all in favor? Court to discuss and consider resolutions for SB twenty-two grants for officers of the sheriff and county attorney. Uh, we don't do one for the district attorney because that is separate. Uh, what this is, the SB twenty-two, probably aware that, um, the state in SB twenty-two is giving money to both sheriff's departments, prosecutors, well, I say both, sheriff's office, prosecutors, county district, counties, and constable's office. We've applied, they opened it up and didn't realize we needed a resolution. We applied for both the sheriff and the county attorney. The district attorney has applied for his own, um, to get those funds to, uh, uh, from the state. It's its two-year program right now. They're looking at extending it in next legislation. But right now I think it's three hundred and fifty thousand for sheriff's departments for equipment, personnel raises, things like that. And I think right now the sheriff is looking at equipment. The one for the county attorney's office is for basically the same thing. Um, and it's to help with prosecution of cases and moving along. Uh, we're already, oh my gosh. We are so far behind in cases right now. So these are the resolutions for that. The only reason we're doing the resolutions is because, um, someone mentioned that we might need a resolution. I reached out to the comptroller's office and they said, yes, you need a resolution and this is what needs to be in it. And so that's what you see before you is these resolutions for both sheriff and county attorneys.
Get it, what we get. Make a motion we approve this before.
Resolutions.
Resolutions. Just the sheriff.
Okay.
If we do this and say that in two years they say we're not going to do it anymore, then are we still going to have to supplement these raises that were given? Or does this need to go into a separate line and say these are, as long as this grant's coming in, we'll?
Yeah, we can absolutely set it aside as a separate, you know, this is what it is. And I don't think it's going to be for raises. It'll be, uh, because they set the minimum at seventy-five thousand. For all across the state law enforcement or sheriff's departments, that's the minimal. But this, what sheriff is going to do is, is equipment this year.
I'll second. I'm motion. Yes, for district attorney, we don't have to do.
Okay.
He gets his own.
Yes, sir.
Special. All right, all in favor? Yeah, I saw it. I thought maybe it was like that. Since you mentioned it.
Right. Uh, court to discuss and consider the block safety Texas for this great county sheriff's office. Update on this one. This is something the sheriff is looking at getting these block cameras. They are license plate readers and it looks like they're going to put them at different locations throughout the county. The one question there is, is, uh, who owns some of the poles? And so we're looking at agreements with some of those working on Encore. Encore has actually been working on an agreement with the city, with block to put cameras on poles and they've spoken to them. They're just going to add Skerry County to that agreement and, uh, we should definitely do that. But the sheriff is asking that we allow him to get the block cameras, uh, which capture, uh, these are interesting in that, uh, if there is, uh, an amber alert and it sends out a vehicle, uh, the license plate for the vehicle, if it, if that camera picks up that license plate, it'll send it to the sheriff's department and let them know that it just passed this location. Uh, same thing, it was wandered or stolen. It'll do the same thing on those, so, um, technology is coming a long way.
The city's been using, they've been very productive.
Yeah, you know, I think that's in there. Like, upper stickers.
Right.
That has something like that.
Oh, maybe we did both, but.
And we're already benefiting from the city's block. Yeah, yeah, picking up trash, lots of it.
Motion to approve the block slave duty.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Sorry. I was looking to see.
You all agreed already.
Yes. Okay, cool. All right, court to discuss and consider plans, reservations, promotions, date, budget, and other related items for the one-hundredth anniversary celebration of the Skerry County Golf Course, including a request by the men's and women's golf associ- golf course associations to assist with the planning and celebration. All right, so golf course is a hundred years old this year. I, I haven't researched to find out how many there are in the state of Texas that are a hundred years old, but I'm going to. I'm going to find that out and see if there are any. I don't think there would be many at all. We've been, uh, I personally would love to see a celebration and the men's and women's golf associations have agreed to host something out there and do the work for that. If we would, uh, let them have the course for that weekend, waive the fees and all of that, it's a partnership with them, they will be putting on the celebration for us, basically, is what that would boil it down to. It would let them basically have the course and do what they want out there. I did sit in on a meeting with them last week and there were some great ideas, not just for golf, but to bring other people out there to see, uh, what's going on out there and just bring more people back.
So it looked pretty busy last weekend. There were classes everywhere and it looked good to see a lot of people out there.
That was the Hurley Tournament. And they, they brought, I think it was their area tournament and it wasn't just, are they one A or two A? Hurley.
One A.
One A. So, I mean, it brought in one A through five A, I believe.
Yeah, it was six A. I mean, I believe high was there.
Yeah.
Their six A.
So, I mean, that just gives us more exposure.
Where, where is this silver?
And we're looking at the first weekend in August.
What, for what, where is that first weekend? We're looking at the, I have done.
Yeah, yes, that is a huge, huge issue that can do with.
You got a station on my, you may do the golf course farthest, go to walking trail.
We have a little more time with the walking trips. We have until June of next year for the walking trips. So, yeah. I'm going to let that slide.
Sam, did you have a construction bunch that's going to get it ready? I hear something about that.
That's next on the agenda.
Well, I just got to say that the men and women's golf association has always been unreal in the way that they've supported that course. They've done so much out there. It is just. They've done so much out there, it is just amazing and they've always been willing to do it. And we appreciate that very much. The course is in unbelievable shape. If you're not happy with the way it is, just look back three or four years ago and you wouldn't be happy at all. But it is, it's great and you've done a great job.
Appreciate it.
And I appreciate it. I, I believe we need to partner with them and do what we can to make it the best celebration that we want.
Agreed. And y'all are invited too. First weekend in August. All right, uh, this is the first one sitting all in. Thank you. All right, court to discuss and consider accepting a donation from Reclamation Oil and Energy Services LLC. Hope you don't mind putting your name out there. It's just more advertisement for you, I think.
Yeah.
So, um, so you're basically wanting to prep the, uh?
Prep the subgrades, basically go in, rip the, rip the existing asphalt, the old cart path up, we're not touching the concrete, uh, rip the asphalt up and then come back with patch, foot and blade and set up the subgrade so that Sid can actually come in and lay the millings in. And we need to do a little water work on a few different places, divert water, but other than that, just make it all the way around. But yeah, what did we come up with, eighteen thousand feet, something like that, a cart path? Or some? Four foot? Six foot?
Two.
Man, I'd be willing to bet for us to, we'll probably be closer to eight foot on the, on the prep. I don't have anything small enough to go shorter than that, but that'll give you room for shoulders and sides, whatever. And we've got a few places where we need vehicles to be able to go all the way in. So somewhere in there, I'd say we're closer to eight foot wide.
What I'm going to use is ten foot.
Ten foot, we can do ten foot.
And, uh, let him see if you're over out in the way where the cart, existing so-called cart path is and it's lower than the.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can bring, that's part of some of it, we're going to have to bring some in in order to make the water everything work.
Right, but anyway, I thought just the cart path, like a dairy road, maybe higher than the, or the. I like motion with both of them.
Trying to get those cart paths for how many thousand years? You're terrible.
Thank you for the donation. Whatever, Mike, we appreciate it.
Yeah, this is going to move that project along very quickly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah, all in favor? Thank you. All right, court to consider, discuss and consider certification of additional revenues and the former supplemental payment from Tac, uh, eight hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents, uh, EMS, a claim on EMS, two thousand and eighteen Chevrolet Tahoe. Guess that was damage that was on there. Do you remember?
Yeah.
It's money from Tac.
Make a motion to accept the certification of additional revenue.
All in favor? Okay, um, thank you all, I appreciate y'all, everyone that's come in and wanted to help out one way or another, bring things in. I guess we'll get back with y'all on duty and race, we'll get back with y'all and my ladies and, uh, we'll, uh, get with y'all on everything else. So looking forward to meeting with y'all. I'll get these agreements signed and get them all back to all of y'all. All right, thank you. Thank y'all. All right, we're going to go into executive session. Thank you, Linda. Oh, we're going to do this one. Yeah, yeah, I'm going to have, we're going to do it.